Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, April 16. We maybe have a roll call, please, Kim.
Thank you, Council President. Council President Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Michaud.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any changes to the agenda? No changes? A motion would be in order, please.
So move? Oh, you need to move it.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, move and second it. Any change, any nays? All right. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion for approval of minutes, please.
So move.
I second it.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. For payment of bills, please, a motion?
So move.
Second it.
All right. Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And next up, we have ECD, Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just have one item on the agenda this afternoon. It is information only. It is the 2044 Comprehensive Plan Update, and Kristen's already here for us, so welcome.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I was battling a printer. Good evening, Council. It's so good to see you. Our project team has been very busy behind the scenes, doing a lot of work to get us to where we're at, and we're going to be, in the next two months, having a lot of information released, both for you all for review, but also for the community engagement processes that are coming up. So this was originally scheduled to be a workshop item, but again, workshops have been really full, so we switched it over to our Committee of the Whole Meeting. So there are three questions that were in your memo packet that we would love your feedback at the end of this presentation. So a reminder on where we're at in our schedule. Really, we've spent since December, when we finalized those three alternatives for analysis, doing that work of analysis. And so we are almost ready to release a draft environmental impact statement, which is a fancy word for the three alternatives comparisons. That will be paired with the Round Two Community Engagement. We don't expect the community to read an 800-page document, but we do want to distill down the major findings from that document, and so we're gearing up for a lot of conversations in May through July of this year. So a little bit more information on what's kept us so busy. So while the consultants are doing a lot of mapping analysis and a lot of other behind-the-scenes technical work, we have been meeting with all of our community partners and agencies. And so we've met with over 15 different utilities and service agencies that serve within the city of Kent limits. So it includes things like our own police department, parks, public works, utilities, but it also, and I realize I'm missing transportation on there, but it also includes other external water and sewer districts, Puget Sound Regional Fires, other school districts, and other organizations. And so we do also have meetings with the tribes scheduled coming up as well. And so this is something that most cities don't necessarily do or have. There's no legal or state requirement for it, but we felt like it was really good to make sure that our environmental impact statement was not just our own analysis or reading of their plans, but also doing some vetting to make sure that we're, one, giving our partner agencies a heads-up of what we're thinking, to hear if they have any strong preferences, and then before they have an official public comment period, and to build, continue building those relationships. But then, two, we wanted just to make sure that we're continuing to be a partner in all of this. So what does this look like in practicality? We did a lot of analysis last summer. We are now in the alternatives phase, and once we release the, basically, the pros and cons of the different alternatives and identification of potential mitigation efforts, that informs our final opportunity for what we're going to have as our final land use map, and then drafting the policies around that. There's some elements that are much easier to update because it doesn't really depend on where the growth is going as much. Other elements are a little bit more difficult. So we're also in the background updating some of those elements, like our economic development element. Finally, that leads to our final comprehensive plan, which, as a reminder, is due for adoption by December of 2024. We also launched this spring, or winter, in February, our community advisory group. It consists of more than 20 individuals, and they're all super inspiring, wonderful people that are very excited about our community. The first night, we had about 30 minutes of just getting to know each other around the table, and it was, you could tell there were people that hadn't met each other yet, but were excited about the connections that were being made. And also, just one of the, one of my favorite things that I heard after the meeting is someone came up and said, "Thank you." I felt like the people that were in this room looked like and represented Kent in its entirety. And so that, I felt like, was one of the biggest compliments I could have received in terms of this project. So really excited for that advisory group. We have five meetings scheduled. Our next meeting is tomorrow night. Land Use and Planning Board and Council are welcome to attend, as are the public. We have a little observation area where if you'd like to hear what the groups are discussing, you're welcome to see that. We also are posting meeting minutes as well. So those are available on our project website. Talking about community engagement, so really that's framing a lot of what this project has been the crux of, is making sure that we are not planning for Kent, but that we're planning with the community and hearing from them as every step of the process. And so when we release that draft EIS, it will be a 45-day comment period that runs roughly from May 20th through Cornucopia Days. And so there will be concurrent with, if you want to officially comment on the EIS, or you just want to comment more broadly on our engagement. We do have planned efforts. We're doing something called Outreach in a Box, where we're going to be partnering with community organizations and enabling our community advisory group and Land Use and Planning Board to actually have materials where they can go take information to the groups and organizations they're with, and then bring that back to us. So it'll expand our reach. We will always have our online and digital engagement as well, and then we plan on a couple of large events to have more of the bigger kind of, bigger reach, but maybe not necessarily as detailed conversations, but wanting to make sure we're continuing to expand awareness of the project and hopefully catch email addresses so we can loop them in with more details. So we've identified several events. We're not necessarily saying we'll be able to attend all of these, but one of the questions we had is, in that late May to early July timeframe, are you aware of any other events that would help us reach different populations? So our goal is not to go to five different events where we're meeting the same 20 people at every event. So we want to make sure that the events that we select as we do outreach, we are meeting communities that may not be as tuned in to every single thing that's happening in the city. So one of the questions we will discuss at the end is, any other events or organizations we should add to our list, and then helping us prioritize, like, I think you'll hit the same people maybe at these two events versus this other one. So putting it all together, December is coming sooner than we, any of us will be ready for it. We had, someone had left out Christmas candy bark today, and I was like getting chills already, like, no, we can't have December any sooner. So it will be here, though. And so really what we're thinking of, how we're putting this together, we do have our required and optional elements that we've committed to. So we have land use, housing, capital facilities, utilities, and transportation. For transportation, that will largely integrate the Transportation Management Plan that was adopted a couple of years ago, because that was a substantial update, continuation of our multimodal level of service plans, but with the new growth potentially in one of the alternatives along Kent-Kinley and Benson Court, or there may be some adjustments that are needed there. And then parks and recreation, the updated park and open space plan and the recreation plan, both were substantially updated since the last comprehensive plan, and so we really anticipate bringing a lot of that in, and then updating our comp plan element to reflect the goals and policies that are, they have a lot more towards equity and their level of service than what the old comp plan has, and so we don't anticipate significant deviations. So one thing that we do want to, we're excited to introduce to you all is our, we've been working on our opening chapter, what we're calling the Framework of the Comprehensive Plan, so fancy word for an intro. You may recall, the 2015 plan has a vision and then 12 subdivisions, which is this, let's see if I can get this right. There we go. This document right here. So we have a vision statement and then 12 individual categories, and these are categories like land use, transportation, utilities. They may sound very familiar to elements or what's in the Growth Management Act, the 14 principles of that. These actually were derived from something that was adopted by Kent Council in 1992 at the start of GMA, and they've been slightly adjusted over years. When we looked at this, we said, these are really great for specific chapters, but they don't necessarily get to the interrelatedness of land use and housing and parks and transportation, and what makes a city a desirable place. And so what we've done is we have worked to incorporate both what was the existing 2015 Comp Plan Vision and Goals with what our updated 2018 Strategic Framework was, plus the community input. And so we are going to be building off of that for our new vision and guiding principles. The vision largely is similar to 2015, but we added in additional words to add context to what we're talking about, and we can, we'll be going into this in more detail. We're vetting this with the Community Advisory Group and Land Use and Planning Board, so there may be some changes as we make sure, did we get this right from this process? And then our guiding principles, so we're no longer calling them any goals in the beginning, because really the goals and the policies are in each element. I like to think that the guiding principles are really more of our North Star. So there's something that, as a city, what are our core values? Where, what are we aiming for? Not necessarily a specific subset of maybe a city operation, but more generally, how would we want to describe the city? And so these are, you know, generally, I think, when we talk about them, they will be things that we shouldn't anticipate drastically wanting to change over time, over the next 20 years, where our goals and policies that are in each element, we may tinker with a little bit more. So what does that look like? We use the five goals from the Strategic Framework. Some of them were structured more towards internal city operations, or how we as a city would interact with the community. So we did do, we took a little bit of creative license to adjust them to make sure we were more outward-facing as a community itself, and so it includes an inclusive community, evolving infrastructure, thriving city, sustainable and resilient, and then innovative and responsive government. And so we do have descriptions under each of those. For the sake of you all, because they're not finalized yet, I'm happy to send them as an email if you'd like to see them. But we are, again, we're working with the advisory group tomorrow night. We have an interactive exercise to go through in more detail what the descriptions of each of these are, to make sure that we're fully encompassing what we heard from the community during our previous envisioning efforts. So with that, I have three requests for feedback. One is given our project timeline and what we're working on and kind of where we're at with, knowing that certain elements may not necessarily need as much effort as other elements. I wanted to ask you all, if we were to come back to you and spend more substantial time on some of these elements than just a quick update on, this is what we're doing, but really if you wanted to dig into some of the policy conversations, if you had to pick three of those elements, what your priorities would be, and I did list the elements there, it's land use, housing, transportation, economic development, parks and recreation, climate resiliency, and then capital facilities and utilities. So you don't all have to come to a consensus, but hearing kind of what you think, it will help us as we're planning for the next nine months or so, eight to nine months, of what we bring forward to you all for conversations.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, so let's look at question number one. First of all, we saw some of the places that they'll be having conversations. Anybody have anything that we feel like has been missed?
I think I may have flipped them in your.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Oh, you know what? I am looking at my packet. I'm sorry. Okay, so three elements. Sorry, let's go back to that. I am looking at this, so I'm so sorry. I'm looking at my packet, sorry.
They're the same questions I just ordered then.
All right, so the elements. Anybody have thoughts? Councilmember Michaud.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I actually think the first three that are listed there, land use, housing, and transportation, would be good to get a more in-depth look at.
Councilmember Corr, oh, yep, go ahead. Let's just, we can go down the line if that works, too.
For me, it'll be economic development, transportation, and then housing.
I think housing, transportation go hand in hand, so, and economic development, those are all three important for me, so.
Yes, I also think that housing, transportation, and economic development would be something that we could look into.
Transportation, housing, and climate resiliency.
Okay, thank you. The next one, as the project moves into our next phase, so we will have a pretty hefty draft environmental impact statement. Again, we don't expect you all to read that. We'll bring you a summary of the three alternatives. Wondering how you all feel. So we did pilot a Land Use and Planning Board and Council joint meeting. We will likely be doing a Land Use and Planning Board, a joint boards and commissions meeting again in the future, to kind of make sure all of our boards and commissions are aware and able to weigh in from their own expertise. But wanted to open it up for you all, if you're interested in another meeting, similar to what we did before. If you would prefer not to and want to make sure that Council has extra time, we can schedule that as well. I just want to make sure we're giving you all a heads-up of, would you prefer to do it together or separate, or if you want to give me some feedback later, that's okay as well.
Councilmember Boyce.
Yeah, I was out of town, so I missed the first one. So I guess I'll look to my colleagues to see how the meeting worked. I like to think that working together really kind of helped us, you know, move forward, right? So, but I've missed the meeting, so I'd be interested to see how it would work.
Council President Corr.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. It was actually great just to listen and watch other individuals, like, you know, how they work together and what their priorities are. So I think it was great. I think it's a great idea. But I think not just land use and planning, I think maybe with other, if possible, with other boards and commissions, too, to see if we.
Maybe do a joint boards, commission, and council workshop.
I think, because it just kind of gives you perspective on how other individuals are thinking and where they are, so, thank you.
I mean, that's one less meeting for me, so that's great. I've been open to other feedback as well.
Anyone else? I think we're all shaking our heads yes.
Great. And then last question was just wanting to check if you're, and also give an open invitation, if you're aware of any other community events between that mid-May to mid-July timeframe, and then as we're discussing events, if you can help us prioritize, we want, again, we want to be thorough in who we're reaching out to, but we also have two and a half people to do this work, and so we want to be conscientious of staff resources and budgets, and so making sure that what we're doing is going to reach the broadest representation of our community. So if you have any additional events that you know right now, I'm happy to hear of those. And then I will also say, we will have handouts, so as you all are at community events, we would love for you to help distribute information and point people to the project website and give them my card all the time.
All right, and he's, Councilmember Michaud.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are some Green Kent events going on. You can just search Green Kent, or you can give some, me some brochures. I can put them there. Prioritizing, I think Juntinta's good, and Kent International Festival is also something we should prioritize.
And Kristen, I, do you know if there are any drinks in the driveway, or things that the mayor is doing where there's going to be like a larger group of people, where it may be an advantage to be there?
Yeah, so we met with multimedia yesterday, because I would, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the work that they're going to be adding in to make us successful in this. And so we talked specifically about targeting, targeting some of the larger drinks in the driveway, as well as the ones that may be along potential growth areas that may be experiencing more change, just so that they also have a little bit more of an early opportunity to discuss questions. That's great.
Any other council members have? Council President Corr.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Kristen, I know that you were at Calca Day last year. It's not mid-May, it's May 11th this year, so if that works for you. But there are also faith-based events happening at like Gurdwara and mosques during summer, so I think those might be good places to be. And I think Wilson Playfield gets a lot of different demographic of parents, especially millennial parents. So I think that might be a good place to, I don't know, be there on a weekend or something.
Great, thank you. Thank you. That was one, one demographic that we talked about, because they have such limited time, how do we, how do we target? So thank you.
Councilmember Michaud.
Yeah, one other thing, the senior center, maybe they have a big event coming up, but you could go there and talk to the seniors.
Great. Councilmember Fincher.
Also suggest getting in contact with Downtown Partnership, seeing if they have any wine walks coming up or any of those events, the nerd walk, or the, I think, the nerd, I forgot what the full name is, but I know that that was well-attended also, so to see if they have anything that you might be able to tap into.
Okay, great, yeah. We're aware of, also, they have a dog, like a paw party as well, that's in the timeframe, but that's great, thank you. Well, that's all I had. Thank you so much. Appreciate the feedback.
Hopefully, we gave you some good information.
It was also helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Have a good evening.
And Council President, that is all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Thank you so much for filling in for Councilmember Larmour, when she's out of town. Public safety, Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have a presentation here around the ordinance amendment, Kent City Code 9.36, relating to traffic camera and violation of fines. And we are gonna have the one and only, Ms. Tammy White.
Yes, good afternoon, Council. Tammy White, City Attorney. I'm gonna steal Breonna Murray's thunder a little bit. I know she's gonna come and talk to you and give a legislative update and workshop, but I'm gonna talk about one bill that she's probably gonna talk to you about as well. The ordinance deals with only part of the bill, but to give you some more context, I kind of want to talk overall about what the bill does related to traffic safety cameras. So during this last legislative session, the state adopted in-growth substitute House Bill 2384 regarding traffic safety cameras. It substantially changed how revenue from those cameras can be utilized on balance. We, at the end of the day, are okay, and I'll get into the details on that in just a minute, but currently, under state law, there is no limitation as to how we use those revenues. So Council previously in years past had elected to use it for public safety purposes, and that's what currently funds our body-worn camera program that the police department has, along with the dash cameras that are gonna be going in later this year. Under this new bill adopted by the state, all revenue from traffic safety cameras must go to roadway improvements. And so those roadway improvements are looking to increase safety on the roadways, so they can be used for complete streets construction, road design, and construction to reduce speeds and improve safety for multiple users, including those with mobility site and other disabilities. So it does that, so one, all revenue has to go to roadway improvements. Additionally, it has to be used in areas of the city that experience low incomes and high injury crash rates that are proportionate to that, that share of the population, so that's another limitation. A third limitation based on that revenue is the state now gets 25, after four years, after a camera is in use for four years, the state automatically gets 25% of the fines generated from those infractions that goes into the Cooper Jones Transportation Safety Act. So it really now, if you were to add in new camera, like if we were to do just straight speed cameras, because we don't currently have those in place here in the city, all of those restrictions to the revenue would apply to those cameras. Breonna, our chief administrative officer, our mayor, staff in our office lobbied hard to the state to get our program exempted from those provisions. The reason being is that Council had methodically gone through and considered our school zone and our red light cameras, and said, "Look, we're gonna put these in these areas that we've determined are the most dangerous, and we're gonna use that revenue for public safety purposes, specifically to fund body-worn cameras." Those cameras cost, she can probably tell you more details about, about millions of dollars a year to supply those cameras and all of the data and store them up in the cloud. So we were at risk of losing all of that funding for that purpose, and then there would be some really difficult conversations to have in the future. So we are exempted, because we had an ordinance that was in effect prior to January 1 of 2024, and because Council had created a program that specifically limited how revenue could be used. So because of that, we're specifically exempted from all those revenue limitations. What the bill does do, though, is it changes sort of the, well, doesn't sort of, it does change the fine amount. So currently, the state assigns that the fines for traffic camera violations is tied to what the agency charges for parking violations. So here in Kent, we have a broad range of the fine that applies to parking violations, anywhere from $30 up to $450. So we had our fine rate at $138, somewhat in the middle, and then if an individual was speeding in a school zone 30 miles or over, then they were assessed a fine of $248. What the state has done is they've just eliminated that connection to the parking fine, and just said that the fine for a traffic camera violation cannot be more than $145, and then they tie it to inflation rate every five years. So every five years, the State Office of Financial Management will look at inflation over that time period, and then can increase that maximum fine amount by whatever that rate of inflation is. The state also provides that traffic camera violations in school zones can double. So we had had an increased fine amount of $248. It wasn't directly doubled, but now it's expressly authorized in the new bill that was adopted, so it could double. So the ordinance that's before you now is trying to tie it more to state law, so we don't have to keep coming back to you when there's changes. So it provides that the fine amount for traffic camera violations is $145, so that's gonna be for red light and then also for school zones, but if a person in a school zone is 30 miles per hour over, then it would double. And I think there's one thing I didn't really clarify. Under the bill that the state adopted, automatically, you could adopt, any violation in a school zone could be double. So there wouldn't even be the base rate of $145. The ordinance before you still provides a base rate, a lower amount, for an initial violation. It's only if somebody is speeding excessively at 30 miles an hour, so 10 miles over, that they would then be assessed the double fine. What the bill also does is there is now for individuals who receive state assistance for their first violation that they get, and then for a 21-day period from that first violation, their fine amount is cut in half. So there's gonna be some reduction in revenue for those individuals that are covered under that, and it's individuals who receive state assistance or get program benefits through Women, Infant, and Children Program. And the only state exists, or state public assistance that is exempted or not included in that break of the price is for Medicaid, so that piece is called out. But any, any other public assistance that an individual receives, they can get a first-time waiver of the fine amount by 50%. So this ordinance now incorporates that change as well. So kind of a lot there.
Yeah, why do you say it would reduce? Because like now, if they, if they go over the speed limit, it doubles, right? So I would imagine there are some cases today where that might have happened, and that means we get all that money, right? That's a true statement?
I'm sorry.
So let me, okay. So right now, you just said that if you're 30 miles over, 10 miles over.
Yeah.
The fine would double.
It's, under the proposed ordinance, it would double. Right now, there's just an increased fine. So what we have right now is it's $136 as a base, and when you do 10 miles over in a school zone, it's $248, so not exactly double. This now just would, in fact, double.
But today, before this come in place, the double wouldn't happen, right? The extra fee.
Oh, so if I were to go and speed in a school zone today, not like on a traffic camera, but one of these fine officers in the back of the room were to catch me speeding, the fine could be doubled.
Okay.
Today.
Okay. All right, I'm good. Any questions?
Yes, thank you. So say I am caught speeding three times. Is it still just that one base rate, or does it stair-step up?
It does not stair-step up, it's just that one base rate. So you get, each ticket is $145. It is treated, just like it is now under current law, like a parking violation, so it's not a moving violation on your record for insurance purposes. So you get that little break, but you still just pay the $145. It doesn't step up over time.
Tony.
Thank you. So Tammy, do you, you said that this will be a little loss in revenue. Are we still able to pay for the things that we are paying for with the revenue we get? I mean, what do we anticipate?
So it's kind of hard to anticipate, because, one, we don't know how many individuals are gonna qualify for that reduced fine amount because they're on public assistance, so we assume there's gonna be some reduction in those fines. But now, by also increasing it slightly from $138 to $145, there's gonna be some slight increase there that should make up for some of it. And then additionally, for those that are 30 miles or over in the school zone, you'd be doubling it, so instead of being $248, now it'd be $290, so there's a little increase that you're getting there. So the hope would be on balance. Yeah, it'll wash, but it's really hard to know, because we don't know how many people are gonna qualify.
Well, listen, so if I put a new camera tomorrow, will that fall under the state, or we exempt period?
So depends what, so I. So depends what type, so I would argue, it depends on what type of camera you want to do. So if it is a school zone or a red light camera, under the program you've already adopted, I believe we could put in those cameras and not be subject to these revenue restrictions. Now, if you were to consider different cameras, so if you wanted to put in like school walk zone cameras or roadway work zone cameras or speed cameras, we would be subject to those revenue limitations.
I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Okay, that was my first question. My second one was, so does the state get 25% of our revenues from our previous cameras? Perfect.
We keep all of our revenue, because council made the wise decision many years ago to set up this program and limit how revenue could be used.
Any other questions? Yes, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Tammy, my question is, how would our residents who get the ticket know if they qualify for a certain program?
So we are required under this law to make that known to them. So we haven't worked out exactly how, you know, what the notice is gonna say or how we're gonna implement it, but we are required to let them know of that right.
Okay.
And then they would make that request through the court. And if they make the request, it's automatically granted.
And the second question-
Assuming they, assuming they qualify, I should say.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Second question, is our program going to be assuming the way it is right now, gonna be safe for a while in the future, or is there-
Well, it's the legislature, so it's safe until the next legislative session. This bill, I, I can't speak for the CIO, snuck up on us. So we were dealing with the sales tax issue that we were addressing for public safety purposes, and then this sort of just like flew under the radar. And when we became aware of it, we jumped all over it, and I don't know how many other jurisdictions were, if we were leading the way, but we were very vocal and very loud to try to preserve this funding, because it was important for Kent.
Thank you.
Any other question? Thank you, Tammy. Madam President, that is our report. Thank you. Oh, I got a motion. You're so right, I'm looking right at it, too. Sorry. Yes, ma'am. Okay, motion, I move to adopt orders number 4487, amend in section 9.36.140 and 9.36.150 of the Kent City Code to incorporate state legislated changes that take effect June 6, 2024, related to traffic cameras violations.
I second it.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, state members, and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, well done, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Thank you, Tammy. All right, Public Works, Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You see, Rob Brown is already ready to tell us about traffic signal shop leases.
Ma'am, evening, Council. My name is Rob Brown, Public Works Department. I'm the manager of transportation engineering. So since 2006, we have actually leased shop space for our traffic signal shop. There isn't enough room in the city shops down by Russell Road and Hogan Park for all the things that we have, so we've leased shop space in on Central Avenue South. And what you're seeing here in the picture is our shop in the Plemons Industrial Area. So it's a quick overview of our shop. This is the lower floor, where we've got most of our indoor space, where we work on things, troubleshooting, repairs, things like that. We've got a group of a bunch of good guys that, instead of remove and replace, we repair because we want to be as efficient as possible with our budgets. So you can see upper left corner, that's Dan Cartmail, one of our signal technicians, working on our controllers, and then just some others, you know, we've got storage space, we've got some workbenches. You can see the upper, the upper center picture, that's actually our entryway. So we took over this space from another company that had actually a business presence in there, so we've got a fancy floor for our signal shop. And then we'll move to some pictures of inside the bay. So the bay is about two-thirds of the, the signal space. You can see on the left side, we keep two of our vehicles in there, keeps them protected from prowlers and things like that in the evenings. Upper picture in the center, it's our bulk storage, we've got signal parts, wheels of wire, signal cabinets. Lower center, you can see some of our signal cabinets that are being burnt in and tested for deployment. And then on the right side, you can see our pallet racks for, for storage. So upper, upper storages for files and things like that, that don't get access very much in the lower storages. Again, more signal parts, streetlights, batteries, things like that, that we need on a regular basis. So our lease, currently, we, we lease this space for $2,985 a month, and so that is split up between a rent rate and a common area maintenance rate with Plemons. The proposed lease rate for 2024 through 2027 is an increase in, in the actual rent rate of $100 and the common area maintenance rate of $140, a total increase of $240. Total lease rate per month is $3,225. That's an increase of about 8%. So our lease does expire at the end of May. And I did also want to point out that there are no budget impacts, this was included in our budget forecasting, so no new budget impacts. And with that, I would ask you to consider reauthorizing the lease, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Rob, so the Keyhawk facility would solve this issue in the future?
In a manner of speaking. So we are not planned to go to Keyhawk, we, we do have some, like our outdoor storage, like our poles and things like that are up at Keyhawk. But the plan is, once the existing, like the utilities and streets and things like that, when those groups move up to Keyhawk, we would then move over to the shop space, the existing shop space.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Madam Chair, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement with Plemons Industries, Inc., subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will be signing another lease. And now Thomas is going to come forth and tell us about the Reef Road Roundabouts. So getting a little bit more money for that.
My name is Thomas Lehrer. I'm an engineer with Public Works Design Engineering, and I'm here to request council acceptance of additional grant funds from the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board, TIB, for the Reef Road Roundabouts Project. This first slide shows the general location of the project area. The project includes the construction of compact roundabouts at intersections of Reef Road and 253rd Street, and Reef Road and Lake Fenwick Road. TIB has authorized an additional $239,250 for the, for a total grant funding amount of $1,834,250 for this project. Public Works is requesting council acceptance of the additional TIB grant funds.
Well, I am always happy to accept money, so I move to authorize the mayor to accept additional grant funds in the amount of $239,250 for a total grant funding amount of $1,834,250 from the Transportation Improvement Board for Reef Road Roundabout Project, amend the